Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 8th, 2014 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz and I will begin the meeting by asking the clerks to call the role of the school committee.
Here.
Ms. Anne Hennessy?
Here.
Mr. Darren Myers?
Here.
Ms. Mary Porter?
Here.
Mr. Edward Horst?
Present.
President. Thank you very much. We're actually going to do a special item on this evening's agenda and I'm actually going to move over to the podium for that process and I'd like to invite Dr. Theodore Selkirk to join me at the podium if you would. This evening we are so honored to be able to recognize Dr. Selkirk who is retiring after having been our school district's physician for some 28 years and I just want to thank you on behalf of the city for your amazing service to our, well, to our community but also to our school community. And I wanted to invite Karen Jarvis Vance, our Director of Health and Safety, to come up as well and just to say a few words as well before we do a presentation.
Thank you. So, I started here in Northampton in 1997 as the school nurse at Northampton High School and I have to say I had never met a doctor quite like Dr. Selkirk in all my 25 years of nursing. A man who makes house calls and still does make school calls, well, not anymore. All right, false advertising and really has a true passion for caring for children and families. He also has a deep and profound respect for nurses and what they contribute to medicine. I'm sure that's in no small part due to the fact that his wife Eleanor is a nurse and was his nurse for a very long time, so, Dr. Selkirk, these are actually for you to bring home to Eleanor to thank her from all of us for sharing you with us all these years. And the other thing I wanted to say, just to give you a measure of what, okay, don't do it, what Dr. Selkirk means to me personally. I left the district for a few years and came back in my current position as Director of Health and Safety and my very first day of work when I was very nervous, I opened the front door to my office and underneath the door was a note and it was slipped under the door and it says, "Director-in-Chief, welcome aboard. We'll contact you about getting together. TK Selkirk, still school physician." And that, I kept it in my desk drawer all these years and I cannot express to you the loss I feel, but I hope you will still come around and visit and you can still have our chats. And I think one of my nurses, a few of my nursing staff are here tonight if you want to wave, to honor Dr. Selkirk and one of my nurses just wanted to also say something briefly from the nursing staff.
Very quickly, very quickly, because this is not my forte, but because it's Dr. Selkirk, I just want to say that he not only shared his wealth of information with us, he shared his wealth of support and kindness to us as school nurses and he took the utmost care of the students who he treated for the Northampton School District. He's a wonderful, wonderful man and he will be missed.
As a small token of our appreciation, we wanted to present you this desk clock. It says, "Thank you, Dr. Theodore Selkirk, for your 28 years caring for the students of Northampton" and it has your, the dates of service, 1986 to 2014. So, thank you so much again. And the podium, the podium is yours, so I'll hold it for you while you use.
I haven't prepared a speech, but it's been, I very much enjoyed over all these years working with the staff and the students and I think you have a great school system here. And I shall always be able to keep time and yet we are on time, eight of this o'clock. I cherish that all my days.
Okay. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda which is public comment period. We have one, one person who has signed up this evening, Jenny Bender. If you could come to the podium and just say your name and address, thank you. I have a three-minute timer which we use, so I'll just start that whenever you begin your remarks.
So, my name is Jenny Bender and I live at 24 Hayes Avenue in Northampton. And I want to thank you, members of the school committee and Mayor Narcoitz, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am an educator and I have two children at Jackson Street and I'm also a member of the Northampton Public Schools Action Coalition, which is a group of, a group comprised of family, teachers, school staff, and community members who are committed to working towards more equity in our schools and across schools nationally and locally. And many of us are here tonight, some of us are here tonight, to express concern about an issue that's very important to all of us and to the children of our community, the opportunity for all students to receive a hot lunch. So, people want to stand, people from the, yeah. So, this is a statement, I'm going to read a statement that we wrote collectively. It's written by the public, this Public School Action Coalition. So, "The Northampton Public Schools Action Coalition, along with many others in the community, is deeply concerned about the fact that some of our students have been denied hot lunch because of family debt and that furthermore, they have at times endured the humiliation of being served a cold cheese sandwich in front of peers who in turn know that their families have not paid their food bill. We understand that Food Services employees are in a difficult position and are following protocols. We are also aware that Superintendent Nash is committed to ensuring that all children receive a hot lunch and that for the time being, individual schools are addressing this issue in their own admirable ways. For example, by turning to the PTO to allocate funds and by relying on the generosity of teachers and families to erase others' debt. We certainly applaud these efforts and we are deeply grateful to be part of a community that bands together to ensure that no child in our community is denied school lunch. However, after many conversations with principals, teachers, and families, we are also aware that the system is not working as it is currently constructed, largely because there is a lack of consistency across the schools and because the burden to solve the problem continues to fall on the generosity of teachers and families. We feel strongly that the district itself should take a firm and final stand against current practices. We specifically request the following. The district, number one, the district adopt and honor a policy that all children who order school lunch always receive a hot meal regardless of debt. Number two, the retroactive bills for families on free or reduced lunch are erased now and always if they recur in the future. Number three, the district demands that the lunch program improve its communication with families and that the district helps families in need fill out and process forms so that debt is no longer incurred because of a lack of clarity, communication, or understanding. Number four, the school committee and district leadership ensures that the NPS Food Services complies with the above in order to meet the needs and values of our community. Because there seem to be some different understandings about what is happening in our lunchrooms, we urge the school committee to talk with Food Services staff, families, teachers, and principals. Despite protocols and pilot programs that may have been put in place, the fact remains that there is no district-wide policy ensuring that all children receive a hot lunch regardless of financial standing. We should not tolerate a tiered meal program for our children, especially one that is often based on socio-economic status. Mayor Narcoitz, as a member of the school committee and mayor of this town, we would like to conclude by asking you two questions. First, do you think that all children in this city deserve a hot lunch? And second, when will the school committee thoroughly address this issue? On behalf of our children, we thank you all for your time and consideration.
Okay. I don't see anyone else who's signed up to speak this evening, so we will move on to announcements. Does any members of the school committee have any announcements? Okay, no announcements. The next item is our recommended actions, that we have a consent agenda and we have several sets of minutes for your approval. We have the school committee meeting minutes of March 13th, 2014, April 1st, 2014, April 10th, 2014, April 16th, 2014. We also have the following contract and transfer approvals. The Hitchcock Center for the Environment, Science Residency Program at Leeds and Ryan Road, $10,800. Vanpool Transportation, Special Education Transportation, $420,000 per year, three-year contract. J. Solisian Sons Incorporated, AMD, to original Bridge Street Bathroom Partition Replacement Contract, $720. Pearson Education Math Investigations Curriculum, K through 5, $23,295.4. Collins Electric Company Classroom Telephone Intercom and Clock Systems at Leeds, $55,697.50. Northampton Parent Center, AMD to original, or amendment to original contract for parent support programs and playgroups, $3,954. And then we have three field trip requests. JFK, sixth grade, trip to Bronx Zoo, New York, for June 18th, 2014. Jackson Street, fourth grade, Ellis Island and the Statue of Liberty, New York City, June 20th, 2014. And the Leeds, fourth grade, Connecticut Science Center, Hartford, Connecticut, May 29th, 2014. And I would entertain a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we have reports and recommendations and I see we are not joined this evening by our three student representatives, Emily Stam, Dylan Weaver, and Maddie Kailane. I did though want to take the opportunity in their absence, I suspect as seniors we won't see them again, at a school committee meeting. And so I did want to thank them and congratulate them for their service as student representatives on the school committee and obviously, I'm sure that their, their peers and their parents and their teachers are very proud of them for the, for the work they've done this year and we look forward to our new student representatives in the, in the coming school year, so I just wanted to acknowledge them. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Northampton High School Environment Club and the presentation is on compost at NHS. So, I wanted to invite, what's that, oh, I'm sorry, Ellen Hirschberg and the students and maybe you could introduce the students who are helping with this project and, and the floor is yours.
Okay, so, one of our students is at a lacrosse game, so maybe she'll come in the middle of the presentation, we'll see. But we're thrilled to have this opportunity tonight to tell about how high school students are making a meaningful contribution to their community by thinking about garbage. I'm Ellen Hirschberg, the school nurse at Northampton High School and also the advisor for the Environmental Club. This semester, three students asked me to be their mentor for their, oh, no. Need to see my speech for their senior capstone project. I'm not a good spontaneous speaker, okay? And their spontaneous, their capstone project, the senior capstone project was to set up a trash sorting system and composting of food scraps in the Northampton High School cafeteria. In this presentation, Anna Moore, Lucy Polan, and Eleanor Polan, who is still at a lacrosse game, will show you step by step how they made compost happen and we want to continue to make compost happen, which is why we're here tonight. We're asking you for your, to join us and to help us because a healthy planet is necessary to support healthy people and vice versa. The students will show you that it's not hard work to change our relationship to waste, to the waste that we produce. It just takes everyone to make a small effort and then change what happens.
So, girls, you're up. You're swift and you'll hit Eleanor's area too.
All right, thank you. So, before implementing the compost system at Northampton High School, we had a two-bin system. One of them was a recycling bin and one of them was a trash bin, as seen over there. Click the arrow.
Is there any other reason why it wouldn't move if I'm clicking arrow?
So, this is our two-bin system, as you can see, and in the trash can we would often find recyclables, milk cartons that could be recycled, and also food scraps that could be composted. And so we found that it wasted a lot within the trash bin and so we decided we would implement a sorting system. And so one of our motivation was that we knew that the Northampton landfill had closed and we saw in the cafeteria that a lot of students were not really being mindful about their waste and they were throwing a lot of things that could be composted or recycled into the trash bin. So, before we implemented, implemented our own composting system, we went to Jackson Street School and Smith College and there we learned about how we would set up our composting system, we got a couple inspirations, and we also learned that a monitoring system would be very helpful. We started out small. We had kitchen scraps for pre-consumer waste in the kitchen and there we collected pre-consumer waste and we composted that every afternoon and we rinsed out the bins. And we soon decided that we would do, expand our composting system to the cafeteria as a whole, so we did a waste audit to see how much waste we would save. And we found that we were originally producing four to five bags of trash each day and we reduced it down to one, just by sorting through liquids, recyclables, and composting. So, yes.
That's great.
So, we're not that tech savvy, but.
Okay, move finger.
And so as the pie chart shows, we were able to reduce, the trash that was getting thrown away, two-thirds of it was able to be composted or recycled. So, up next, Anna's going to talk about how we went about this in our current system.
Thank you.
Okay, so, this is what our cafeteria looks like now. We have four bins, one for liquids, one for recyclables, trash, and compost.
They made the signs themselves?
One of the things we knew we had to have in order to make it work well is monitors. So, starting from the first day of compost, we would stand out in front of the bins and just like tell people where things went. The three of us have done most of the monitoring, but we've also included an environmental science class and a biology class who got extra credit for monitoring during lunch. And we're also working towards getting a monitoring system that includes other clubs. The reason we separate out the liquids is that we can't compost them. We don't want them in the recyclables and would rather not put them in the trash, so every day after lunch we pour them down the drain and wash out the bucket. We knew that to make the composting system last after the three of us graduate, it had to be easy and one of the ways we made it easy was by using bio-bags, so these green bags that biodegrade. We paid for them out of the Environmental Club budget and we've been using them with a lot of success. So, we've gotten support from a lot of people. Greg Cochran arranged for alternative recycling systems to pick up the compost once a week and he's also given us advice along the way. Barbara Rakaska joined the project by having the cafeteria kitchen compost food scraps and Kathy Zieha gave us tour of the Smith College Dining Hall and also gave us a collection of five-gallon buckets to use. Susan Waite helped us early in the process by telling us other schools that composted and giving us suggestions. Jackson Street School let us visit and see their system. The custodian there was really helpful. And we also need to thank Mr. Lombardi for letting us have an advisory period to spread awareness about composting and everyone in the high school for believing in it and for the kids for sorting their trash and definitely Ms. Hirschberg and the other Environmental Club members for their help. John and Darlene are in the cafeteria every day during lunch and they've just been really great partners in this project. So, we hope that in the future, every school in Northampton will have the same trash sorting system for recyclables and composting so that kids just need to learn it once when they're in kindergarten or first grade and then they don't need to learn it again. Our composting system has made a big impact, but it would make an even bigger impact if the school lunches were served on compostable paper plates and we used reusable utensils and recyclable packaging. Do you have any questions?
I do. I'm curious how quickly your friends and colleagues learned to do the composting and do you still need to have the monitors there or is it, has everybody gotten on board with them?
Yeah, well, it's been interesting because right away, there are a lot of students who compost at home, so they know how it works. They were on board right away. There was this other group that was really interested in it and really cooperative, but didn't know what went where, so we'd have to teach them. They're pretty good at this point. There's another group of people who, they need someone to stand there in order to sort their trash. I mean, they come up and they'd rather just throw it all in the trash, but if we're standing there then, then they'll sort. So, at this point, we still do need monitors for, for that small group of kids.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a comment. I think it's wonderful that you guys took the initiative to do this. It's, it's a great idea and you've done a great job.
Thank you. We've really enjoyed it.
Do you have a sense of how many pounds of trash you've diverted out of the waste stream and, and how, and if you scaled this up to the entire school system? Because again, one of the things, you look in our budget, there's a line item for waste and it's directly related to how many tons of waste. I'm just curious whether you kept track. I know you did that initial data point, but did you project that forward and check it again during the?
Okay, I know gallons as of now. As of now, I think it's about 1,000 gallons of compost that isn't going to the landfill or hasn't gone to the landfill. I don't know more than that.
Right now that we do have to pay for the compost to be picked up, so it's not, unfortunately, it doesn't go out of the line item yet. Maybe in the future we can. Partially also knowing that it's not going to the landfill, although it's getting recycled into, back into the earth.
Where does your, where does the compost currently go? Or where does the waste currently go for composting?
Alternative recycling systems takes it to a composting facility. I think they have a facility of their own, but it might also go to Martin's Farm, which is in Greenfield.
Have you spoken to Smith Vogt about, about starting a composting? Are they interested at all in doing that as part of their educational program?
I talked to the person in charge of Food Services at Smith Vogt a few months ago, or longer than that actually, and she was interested in starting one, but I haven't heard from her since.
I thought you already did come.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying actually compost production, so taking food wastes and, you know, as part of the farming, you know.
Smith Vogt had, had done a pilot for a commercial composting a few years ago. It kind of, it ended, it was, it was difficult, they had some management issues, but. I want to thank you on behalf of the city because this is exactly the kind of stuff we're trying to, we've been trying to do since the landfill closed and, you know, we have a very popular compost program at the transfer station that people like and I'd love to see us get to a point where we could, you know, some of our cities around the country have curbside composting and I know, I'd love to see us get to that point to really start diverting waste out of the, out of the waste stream, but thank you so much for your leadership at the high school on this issue.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
These are good regards. Also, I don't want to ask a dumb question because I don't like.
Well, is there a plug?
That's what I was thinking, like, you know, Starbucks gives their coffee grounds. What great initiative.
Just going to let this, okay, that's all set up. So, the next, the next item on your agenda is a vote and this is in regards to acceptance of an award of CPA funds for the Bridge Street Playground and we have Principal Beth Choquette and I know we have some Bridge Street parents here as well.
This is, it kind of has to be, we've already been approved, but this is our little adjournment.
Yes, they're still looking for magic.
Good evening. I'm Beth Choquette, the principal of Bridge Street School and this is Mandy Garrett, Gary, a parent at Bridge Street School and Michaela O'Brien, who's also a parent at Bridge Street School. As you know, there are many, many wonderful things about Bridge Street School, including its playground, the location of our playground, the people that we are able to serve with our playground with the location. It's not just the schoolchildren, it's the downtown community. One of the things that's not so wonderful about our playground is the playground itself. When I first came to Bridge Street last year, I was amazed that the amount of times I had to cancel recess and not because of weather, but because of the conditions of the playground. In the spring and the fall, when it's dry, it is very dusty and some of the letters from the children, when they described the dust and the sandstorm sweeping away the teachers, it is really quite dramatic when you see that sand stir up. And then in the wet weather, the mud, the kids can't be out there because it's just so muddy and wet that it's not safe for them to play. In the winter, it's the ice. So, I was amazed at the amount of times that I have to cancel recess because of the condition of the playground. So, last year, Mandy and Michaela and myself began the process of applying for CPA funds to renovate our playground to make it a healthier and safer playground for the community and our students and our faculty and staff at Bridge Street. And we are happy to say that we were awarded $165,000 from CPA Committee to renovate our playground, so we are here tonight to ask for your support and your vote.
Approval.
And approval for the renovation of the playground. We have the design here.
Walk around with it?
If you'd like to take a look at it and if you're interested, I have some samples of the poured rubber surface that is projected to be used for this project, so I don't know if you want to talk a little bit at all, if there's any questions.
Yeah, we're happy to ask you some questions.
Is there more money that needs to be raised?
Yes, we are, we have to raise $35,000 and we are halfway with that already. We have.
Who is, who is raising the money in order, who, who, people send money to?
I've seen it.
Never seen it before.
We're approaching lots of area businesses.
It's the PTO though that was handling it?
So, we have some things that we will need to also ask for in-kind donations, some of the elements of the playground.
Which route nine?
The boulders and the logs and the natural elements. We also have a donation in kind by Valley Home Improvement. They're going to build a shade structure or a playhouse and we're also trying to fundraise an additional amount to have them build a matching one so that, that we would have two, but, but those, that's after we, we raised the 35,000. And right now, the project has not yet gone out to bid, so we're, we have an estimate of how much the project will cost and we're hoping that, that the work will actually come in at, at that amount, so.
You may want to, you may want to mention too, just for folks who don't know, Bridge Street Playground, you kind of alluded to it that the issue here is that you could never grow grass, you could never grow, so that's why this surface is so important because it, the dust, you mentioned the dust bowl, but it's an area that because.
Grass never grows.
Because of trees, because of the location, because of use, grass could never grow there.
Right, it is completely dirt and it's hard. Yeah, it's really compacted and in the summer, when I look out my office window, I'll see a blade of crabgrass, but as soon as school starts up, it's, it's gone and there is a sample of the rubberized material.
And one of the benefits of the project that will come when it's rehabilitated is that it will add over 10,000 square feet of empty land, place space to the city, so it'll be completely wheelchair accessible and so that'll be new, you know, place base area for, for disabled people. So, that's a terrific benefit and it's very low maintenance. We looked into all the options, whether we could grow grass, whether we could have sod, whether we could do lots of different options.
Astro turf.
Astro turf, right. So, we finally came up with this thanks to Berkshire Design Group who did the design on spec, so. whether we could have sod, whether we could do lots of different options. Astro turf, right. So we finally came up with this thanks to Berkshire Design Group who did the, the design on spec, so. And I'd love to just invite you to come see the before playground. So if you have a chance to come look at it between now and July first, you'll really see how, how necessary this project is.
Some of us have, have had kids who've played on the dust bowl, so, yeah.
Actually, if you come right now, it hasn't rained in several weeks. It's really quite dusty. It's, it's pretty intense.
Okay, so again, um, the CPA committee recommended this to the city council. The city council just a couple of weeks ago took the final reading vote to approve the funding. I, I heard the mayor signed it and approved it, so. So it's all, all the approvals are in place. And so we, because it's work that's being done on school property and this is a grant to the schools, we wanted to have a vote of the school committee just to affirm the acceptance of the grant. So, any other questions or comments other than just to thank you and thank the principal and obviously the PTO and all the parents who've been lobbying for this place base and all the hard work and all the folks who've donated some of the, I know that there's been some donated design work as well and, and so it's just a great project. So with that, I would entertain a motion to, um, to, to approve, accept this CPA grant for the Bridge Street Playground project. So move.
Second, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next presentation we have is by Dr. Nancy Chevers. And it is entitled, "Schooling with Design in Mind: Professional Development in the Northampton Public Schools." Okay.
I've learned a lot from Edelwirth over the last six months or so. He's been wonderful. So it's my pleasure to, here, to be here this evening to share with you the professional development plan for Northampton Public Schools. There have been several individuals who have contributed to the plan. I've met with teachers and department chairs and principals, director of technology, and even other curriculum coordinators from other districts, which has been a great process of thinking and learning together. So what I have for you tonight is a plan with several parts. It is aligned with the District Improvement Plan key goals, and I pulled these from the District Improvement Plan. First of all, we have a calendar of professional development aligned with school district improvement plans. Differentiated instruction aligned with the Common Core for all learners. Curriculum alignment with Common Core. Teachers and ESPs together engaged in professional learning communities, or PLCs. And then teachers using data to inform instruction. So the first area is differentiated instruction aligned with the Common Core for all learners. And there are a couple of belief statements here that are important. One of which is, "All students benefit from learning in a culturally and intellectually diverse classroom." The second, "Units designed with differentiation and deep understandings at the core will provide rich learning experiences for all learners." So the goals with those beliefs are, first of all, to create differentiated unit and lesson plans to reflect content, process, and product adjustments for English language learners, students on IEPs, and accelerated learners. Secondly, to identify and include technology software and hardware to support differentiated unit and lesson plans. The activities that professionals, teachers, ESPs, and even administrators will be involved with are workshops with myself and Angelo Rota. Angelo has a lot of great ideas for differentiation using technology. District-wide presentation and workshops with ASD, ASCD author, Dr. Marcia Imbo. And I'd like to just say a couple of words about her. She is a professor at the University of Arkansas, where she teaches graduate courses and gifted and elementary education and for struggling readers. She's a specialist on both ends. She's a specialist with the struggling readers, the ELL students. And she's also a specialist with, with what is commonly referred to as gifted and talented kids, which I prefer to think of as accelerated learners. So she'll be giving a presentation at the end of August for our Professional Development Day and workshops. Let's see, PLC reading. People will be involved with differentiation and the brain, how neuroscience supports the learner-friendly classroom. And that, that publication is also an ASD. And she is, works with Carol Tomlinson, the author of this book. Carol Tomlinson works with Marcia Imbo, so they're directly connected. Differentiation and teacher evaluation workshop for administrators with Mr. Mike Morris, the Director of Evaluation and Assessment in Amherst. We have a grant pending. We have a grant that we have written with Mike and with Louise Law from Frontier Regional that directly addresses differentiation. And we're waiting and we will hear very soon about that grant. It's very exciting. It includes administrative professional development as well as professional development for teachers and ESPs. Curriculum alignment with Common Core and UBD unit design. UBD unit design is a design, a lesson design that involves curriculum assessment and instruction focusing on and developing deep understandings of important ideas. There are three stages to UBD design, one of which is looking at what the desired results are first. What is it that you want students to know and be able to do? Secondly, to look at the evidence. What does that look like? What does the students, what is the educational artifact that would represent that student's success? And then finally, planning a learning, a learning plan with lessons. And sometimes we refer to this lesson design as backwards design, so you'll hear that term quite often. The second belief is that students learn best through a unit design that engages inquiry, promotes a transfer of learning, provides a conceptual framework for understanding facts and skills, and under, and uncovers the big ideas of content. Our goals with those two understandings in mind, to understand what UBD curriculum writing process is, to design curriculum assessments to measure student growth, to write curriculum to promote deep understanding, including for ELLs, accelerated learners, and students on IEPs. And then use the district-wide Rubicon Atlas software program to write curriculum. And that's a very exciting thing for Northampton. We recently bought this. A lot of area districts are using Rubicon Atlas. It will allow us to write curriculum and share it using an online resource. We will be able to share lesson plans, resources, everything. Professional development activities, UBD workshops with Atlas Rubicon. They're going to provide some workshops for all teachers across the grades, as well as we'll be doing workshops with teachers in grade levels and in departments. And then the book that we'll be using is called, "The Understanding by Design Guide to Creating High-Quality Units," and I have it right here. This is the book. It will be purchased for all teachers across the grade levels. And then administrators will have their book as well. They will receive this, "Understanding by Design." These are all by Wiggins and McTie. And this is a little, this is a little more detail for administrators. Departments will also get a copy of that, so if teachers want more information, they'll be able to refer to it. We'll be writing and revising unit plans. And then we have some cross-district professional development planned as well. We're going to be sharing units online with Frontier and Amherst and also East Long Meadow. So we're really partnering with a lot of the districts in the area to work together. A lot of people, we're all working on the same initiatives, so it makes for some excellent, very high-quality professional development experiences. ELA curriculum alignment, this is reading and writing workshop with K through five. And it's a, which is, uh, some of the beliefs are a balanced approach to literacy instruction. Reading and writing is beneficial to all students. Direct instruction and modeling of comprehension strategies are critical to reading instruction. And direct instruction and modeling of grammar, syntax, and semantics, and word study are key components of writing instruction. And the goals are to create reading and writing lesson plans, including shared reading, read alouds, guided reading, independent reading for all of our learners, as well as creating writing and uni, unit lessons and plans that include shared writing, interactive writing, writings workshop, and independent writing. And again, for all kids K through 12. And we're very fortunate tonight to have Jenny Bender with us, who has done a lot of professional development with reading workshop this year, and she's been fabulous. She works with Lucy Cawkins, and I'm sure many of you have heard of Lucy Cawkins. She is a nationally known reading and writing workshop person. So we're also going to do a couple of workshops with Stephanie Joyce, who is a local person who does reading workshop training. And I'll be doing some teacher leading, leader workshops this summer with our teacher leaders. We have been training teacher leaders in reading workshop this year. Jenny has been doing that. Our teachers are learning how to coach each other, how to support each other in this reading workshop model. And we're also hoping to include some administrative readers and writers workshop training. And then we'll be doing some ongoing reading and work, writing workshop coaching with teacher leaders with the support of Jenny Bender throughout the year. So we're very happy to have you here tonight and very happy to have you with us in the Northampton Public Schools, Jenny. So those are the activities for reading workshop and writing workshop. Math curriculum alignment, the belief statement is, "A balanced math curriculum that includes exploration, discovery, concepts, application, practice, and performance-embedded assessments is beneficial to all learners." So here are the goals. To continue to use district MCAS data and mastery objectives to inform instructional units and lessons for all of our learners. And then to design UBD math units aligned with the Common Core and based on investigations mastery objectives. We've been using investigations for well over twenty years in the district. And I have to say, the, the conceptual understanding that children get from this program is going to work very, very nicely with our middle school program, which I'll talk about in just a moment. Activities, again, grade level UBD math workshops with me. People are going to be taking a course, grades K through four, on algebraic thinking and mathematical practices with Patricia Dangelis from the Collaborative for Educational Services. She is also a big investigation, math investigations trainer. She's excellent. We're very, very fortunate to have that. And that course is also offered to us through a grant with the Western Mass Right, uh, Math Project. Again, writing and reviewing and revising unit plans, and again, the cross-curricular unit sharing. Math curriculum alignment for grades six through eight. The belief statement is, "The benefits of an instructional program with a balance of exploration, discovery, direct instruction, practice, result in deep mathematical conceptual understandings, as well as an understanding of how mathematical concepts relate to the world." Application, real-world application. Those are themes in the Common Core and they're themes in our new textbooks, which is very exciting. Goals, "To utilize all aspects of the textbook, the Big Idea," it's our new textbook, it's a beautiful thing, "including lessons, parent resources, online features, practice components, and differentiated instructional elements to promote active learning and teaching." There are extension units on each, in each one of the Big Idea units, which will be fabulous for differentiating. Create and deliver Common Core-aligned differentiated unit plans to reflect content, process, and product adjustments for, again, all our kids. Kids on IEPs, students who are English language learners and are accelerated learners. Activities, we have a textbook training scheduled for the middle of June with the Houghton-Mifflin trainer. I'll be doing the differentiation workshop with, and Angelo as well. And then we'll continue to work on our units and we'll also have our cross-district activities. Math for nine, grades nine through 12, the belief statement, "The benefits of understanding mathematics is as an effective way to solve authentic, real-world problems, which they call modeling, lie not only in the solutions to the problem, but also in the new ideas and relationships that are discovered." Math curriculum alignment, the goals are to understand the new textbook series, which is Core Plus Mathematics, including lessons and lots and lots of online features. You'll find that all of the new textbooks have a lot of software that is, is quite beneficial for all learners. Practice components, and then create and deliver Common Core-aligned units and lesson plans. Uh-oh. Oh, there we go. It's brand new. I got it about an hour ago, but it's working really well. Professional development activities, textbook training. We have the McGraw-Hill representative coming and they're going to give us a nice tour of the textbook. Differentiation and technology workshop, write and review units, and cross-curricular unit sharing. Our district-wide data teams. Every school has a data team. And the belief statement is that data analysis of standardized tests and ongoing analysis of student performance data from multiple sources is the first step in backwards unit design or UBD. And all curricula is best anchored in assessment results. So our goals, "To understand how to locate, read, and understand standardized test data." And we're talking about MCAS data at this point, "To inform teaching, learning, and unit design. Identify trends and patterns of strengths and weaknesses to inform teaching, learning, and unit design." And the activities, our DSAC team course with Kim Morandi, is, who is the technology specialist that will happen this summer. And every, every school in the district will be sending their team. And they will be returning from this experience and then working with their departments. Reading and analyzing Edwin Analytics Online's reports. Edwin Analytics is the state program for data. Data team-led analysis and team and departmental faculty and grade level meetings throughout the year. Teacher evaluation and professional practice. Successful educator evaluation is accomplished in collaboration with evaluators using clearly defined expectations and outcomes with multiple opportunities to improve professional practices. That's the belief statement. Here are the goals. "To understand how to use the Oasis software to upload, respond to, and plan professional development activities associated with the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System." We, with the support of Regina, who had had some experience with this before, we purchased Oasis software. And we talked to other districts that were using it and it, it seems to make the evaluation process work very well. Teachers will be writing and uploading their lessons and responding to administrators and with administrators receiving feedback. All of their professional development will be on this system. And all of their reviews and other uploads will be on this system. And the other practice goal would be using DDMs and other data to identify trends and patterns of strengths and weaknesses to inform professional practices. DDMs are district, district. determined measures, thank you, so many acronyms. District Determined Measures. These are measures that teachers have been working on this year. It's one of my big projects, actually. It's a state project. But I've been leading this effort this year with many other people. They're measurements that measure student growth. So, for example, first-grade teachers might be looking at the extent to which children understand five or six of the most important core curricular elements, doing a pre-test and a post-test, and that would be a DDM that they would agree upon. As well as, of course, and most importantly, our MCAS results. That's an important DDM. And the activities with teacher evaluation, Oasis Training with Jennifer Lean. She's our technology specialist from Oasis. We'll need to provide Oasis Training for our new teachers, as well as DDM, District Determined Measure Identification for new teachers. We need to tell them what they are and what, and what to do with them. And there'll be ongoing DDM implementation and revisions throughout the year. Student growth data collection and submission to principals and evaluators. This year will be the first year to do that, the 14, 15 school year. So, that's the plan, and that's a lot of information in a very short period of time, but that's the plan. I'd also like to share with you momentarily a little bit of the work that I've been involved in this year, some ongoing work and some projects. First of all, there are many grants to tend to. There is the Title I Grant, the Title II Grant. Title II Grant is about professional development. Our Race to the Top Grant. Our DSAC Grants, which are paying for a lot of the professional development that will be involved in this summer, the math work we're doing. And then a professional practice grant for DDMs, which I've been involved with, with three, three different districts have, we've initiated the work together. Professional Practice for Differentiation and Co-teaching, which we are, that is a grant that's pending. We're very hopeful about that one. So, those are the major grants that I've been working with this year. MCAS data analysis and assessment design has been a chunk of my time, as well as Park has taken up its own time this year, which has been very interesting. Teacher Evaluation Committee, we have a committee of teachers that have worked on templates and work through, and are working through contract language. I've been leading and chairing that, looking, making sure that the district improvement plan is attended to. And I've been making district-wide purchases this year. We'll be looking at literacy components and math. Math books obviously are in the works and, and other things that we need in order to make sure that everyone is able to fulfill their curricular goals. District Determined Measures. The Mentoring Program. The Mentoring Program is for mentors and mentees. We have a mentee, excuse me, a mentor program, which will take, took place in early September, where we trained mentors to work with our new teachers. And we had over 65 new professionals in the building this year. So, we had a lot of people to, to make sure that everyone had mentors. Grade-level meetings and curriculum planning have been a big part of my time this year, which, that's the fun part. Major Projects. Math Curriculum Mapping. Professional Development for Readers Workshop. And also, to give credit where credit is due, the teachers have worked very, very hard on Readers Workshop this year, as is Jenny. DDM Professional Workshop and Development. The district literacy plan, we are beginning a plan. We started it about three months ago, where we are looking at all the supplemental resources that are used to teach reading to children in kindergarten, all the way up to the fifth grade. We'll extend it to the sixth grade next year, but this year, we're working at, looking at K through five. Making sure that we are consistent in our buildings, and again, that we're providing the professional development needed for all of the success of all of those programs and all of our kids. The Understanding by Design Professional Development. Rubicon Atlas Software Template Design, that actually took quite a bit of time. It was very exciting and very interesting process. We had to combine the elements of Understanding by Design with this online software. We got to, we had the opportunity to look at templates from all over the world, actually. That's one of the wonderful things about the Rubicon Atlas. We can connect with people, not only in Massachusetts, but all over the country, and even out of the nation, should we choose to do so. And then the Oasis Software Template Design Committee. And Art, Music, Theater Web Design Project with Angelo and I are working on that to make sure that people are really aware of the arts in our schools. And we're, we're creating a website, and that will be up on our school, school site. And then finally, a professional development plan with the budget and calendar. And there'll be a separate calendar for ESPs, for teachers, and for administrators. So, those are major projects. It's ongoing work. It's all very exciting to me. And there it is.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
I wanted to open the floor to questions from the school committee, and I'll turn the floor over.
I have, I have like a whole list of little notes that I've made.
Sure.
And the first thing I want to say is that we have, I think that we've done some really good professional development with some of our teachers over the last few years. Sadly, we have not done a lot of professional development. Or, or pity with all of our teachers over the last few years. Let's make that 10 years or so. So, I'm, I have to say that all of this seems very ambitious, but I can only be excited by the concept that it might actually come to pass. I, if it did, I mean, if we can find the funding for and the commitment for all of this, I would be so happy. It would be thrilling, because I think our teachers deserve it, first of all. I think our students deserve it. And it would be, it would, it would bring to fruition a lot of things that have been promised over a number of years. I can remember, I can't remember how many years ago it was, maybe 15 or more, that Bob Hannah was the Director of Technology, and he told me that we would be able to do data analysis and use test scores to figure out how to inform curriculum development. And I'm, I think some of it's happening for a few people, but I'm still waiting for that to be the norm. And so, the whole, the whole idea of that. So, I just, I, I just want to say, I, maybe I should even back up and say, we haven't had anyone come to us and present anything about professional development that sounded anything like this, ever, that I know of. And I'm pretty sure that we haven't had a plan that was this explicit and this discreet about what was going to happen and for whom. So, I, I just want to commend you for all the work that went into making this presentation, but for all the thinking that you've done. I also like, so beyond just a commitment to professional development, I just want to say thank you for making the commitment to differentiated instruction. It's clear to the school committee from the comments that we got recently from a number of parents regarding the math curriculum and the English curriculum at the high school level and the middle school level, that they're concerned about a lack of differentiation. And I realize that differentiated instruction is much easier at the elementary level than it is at the upper secondary grades. However, I think that we've been missing some of it in all grades. And so, I'm, I'm really excited to hear about supports for differentiated instruction, training for teachers, because I think they need it. But in, then we, and then in listening to you talk about all of that stuff, I saw value statements in there. And those are just like, those kind of blew me away. That's not something that we're used to seeing, but to have somebody spell out what it is that we think works for curriculum for kids and why we want to teach a certain way, gives us a real framework for where we're going to go. So, thank you again for that. And finally, I would say that I'm, I'm intrigued that you've been doing work across districts. For a long time, we've talked about interdisciplinary stuff, and we've talked about, you know, classes that would work together, but I don't know that I've heard of a sharing that goes across districts this way. So, and I, I actually was at a school council meeting last night, and several of the teachers there had just come from some kind of meeting with you, I think, and they were talking about the Rubicon Atlas stuff and saying, oh, you know, it, it looks like it could, it's going to take them some time to get it up and running, but I think they were also excited about the prospects there. Any, anybody who's been around longer than about 10 minutes has probably heard my spiel about community service learning projects. And I'm, I still feel sometimes like I'm, that there's a lot of education that has to be done, because I, there are a lot of people who still don't understand the difference between community service and community service learning. And then, when we start talking to teachers about doing community service learning projects, and they're, they're like, "I have so much stuff to do already. Please, just no, don't give me anything else to do." And I'd love to get to the point where community service learning is considered a tool and not another thing that they have to do, but rather a helpful way of doing what they're already supposed to be doing. But the Rubicon Atlas thing looks to me like the perfect place for people who are good, who have the intrinsic ability to create a, a community service learning curriculum, to put that unit in the software, so that everybody else can share it, and they don't have to create it out of whole cloth. So.
I think the wonderful thing about the, the Atlas Rubicon Program, or the Rubicon Atlas Program, I should say, is that it will bring together many different elements of this professional development plan. It, it necessitates looking at and thinking very deeply about what it is you're going to teach, how it is you're going to teach it, and to the different, the variety of students that you are going to be working with, kids on IEPs and accelerated, everybody. So, the differentiation piece is key to the Atlas Rubicon Program. And it's also, you also have to have an understanding of Understanding by Design, of this backwards design pro, process in order to use the Atlas Rubicon. The good thing about that, though, that I discovered yesterday, my work with, with first graders, first-grade teachers, rather, is that there are lots of pockets of teachers who have had some. But as you had said so perfectly before, there have been, you know, some, there's been professional development, but it hasn't been consistent, and it hasn't been linear, and it needs to be. And so, I think if we, if we use the expertise of some of the teachers who already know UBD, and we start small, as, as McTye suggests, I think we're going to make some great, great gains. And I think that the Atlas Rubicon Program is going to be key for that. It's actually pretty user-friendly. I got on there the other night, and I started writing a unit, just to sort of feel what it was like. And it was very, very user-friendly. I had a whole unit written, and, well, not a whole unit, but a good chunk of a unit writ, written in about 20 minutes. I mean, it, it went very, very, very quickly.
Well, the idea that, that it, that a lesson could be developed, it could be co-teachers developing it, or, or mentor-mentee developing it and using the software. So, it's both, it's both an experience for those people and a collaboration, but it's also, you end up with a product at the end that could be used by someone else. I mean, it boggles the mind to think of the possibilities.
Yes.
I am very excited about it.
It is exciting. Well, and we're already set up to work with two other districts. And I'm hoping we'll be working with Amherst as well. We're already working with Frontier. Frontier Regional will be, will be sharing in, in our departments. And we're, Louise Law and I have been talking about how to do that online, and then also to do it in person. And so, we're pretty excited about that.
Well, I wish you the best of luck in accomplishing even a third of what you.
Well, I think it's going to take us a few years to really get it all done. But I think if every, if every department has one really well-written unit plan by maybe halfway through the year, three-quarters of the year, and we can really revise it and hone it, and everybody understands, I think that will be really great work. So.
Thank you again for your presentation this evening.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions from the school committee? Addison?
I have a quick comment, a quicker addition and a hopefully quick question. The comment is, I think.
It'd be quicker than mine.
I hope so. This spoke, may, thank you, of how much teachers actually have to do right now. And I think we all know that, but when I saw the, and the DDM is this, it's huge undertaking on the part of teachers and you. I know that. So, I just, that's my comment. It really highlighted what teachers are up against right now.
Yes.
In all the districts in Northampton. The second was an addition, I think, I'm really happy that I see differentiation, because we have heard about some of the issues. But the only thing I would disagree with Lisa is that I think elementary school teachers are actually the experts at it. And we don't see it, because I teach in high school, and we, we get like, you know, AP level, honors level, and so, then they throw in everyone, and we're like, whoa, whoa, whoa. And elementary school teachers, just by definition, are doing it, and I, so I, to me, I learned.
That's why I said that it's better at the elementary level, it's harder at the secondary level to do it.
Anyway, they're the experts, so, thank you.
I'm looking forward to working with the ninth-grade English teachers. And Chris Brennan also has some expertise in UBD, and we'll be doing differentiating instruction together. And, and yeah, and it's just going to be great fun for me.
And then the question I have is, you had up there differentiation and teacher evaluation workshop for administrators with the Morris and Amherst.
Yes.
Can you explain what the purpose of that is? That was just.
Yes, I can. So, if I'm an administrator and I'm walking through somebody's class, how is it that I know what to look for? What is a well-done differentiated instruction? How do I know what to look for? And then, so that's part of it. And then the other part of it is, what do, what kind of feedback can I give, and how do I give it? What is helpful? What is going to help that teacher grow? So, that's, that, I think, is a really important piece of the differentiation.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments? Mr. Meyer?
I want to thank you for the comprehensive plan. Since I've been on the school committee and was a member of the curriculum subcommittee, I've always sort of asked for this, for a plan, because I know as a teacher, it's very frustrating to invest in professional development that is a blind alley, right? That's supported as an initiative for six months or a year, and then it's replaced by a new initiative. And so, you know, to have the district lay out a map that clearly is going to be a number of years and, and building towards some important goals is a really important thing, I think. One thing I would say, though, is, I just want to make sure that, as Andi said, teachers are so busy. The list of initiatives is so long. Everything that goes on in the classroom has to continue to go on. And then you're asking for them to incorporate a lot of new tools. And I'm just wondering, we as a district haven't built in release time or, you know, professional, you know, sort of development afternoons as some other districts have done in Western Massachusetts. And I'm just thinking, in terms of supporting this, I, I hope that we're thinking about how we can support this with time, how we can support this with summer stipends, to, to make sure that students come back and take advantage of these opportunities, because I'm just, again, the mind boggles at not only how many initiatives there are, but how much time it takes, not just to check the boxes, but to actually learn the tools in the professional development time, and then bring it back to your classroom and incorporate instruction.
Yeah, that's a really, that's a very important part of all of this, and it's a really, really great comment and concern. We're going to be using our professional development days. We're going to be using some release time. We are going to use faculty meetings, team leader meetings. We, I just wrote two amendments for a couple of grants to give teachers a good chunk of money, or to have a good chunk of money for teachers for stipend work over the summer. The problem and the, you know, the dilemma is that you, you can't, you know, make people come and work during the summer. So, that's, you know, I mean, a lot of times you get fabulous work over the summer, but, you know, people have things to do and places to go in the summer as well. So, it is kind of a dilemma. And I'd like to explore some ways over the next year, you know, with, with the school committee and the new superintendent, and, you know, as to how it is that we can, you know, continue with professional development and perhaps give our teachers a little more time. You know, I'd save that for, you know, an additional conversation at some point, because that, that's an important conversation to have.
Other comments from the school committee? I know that the superintendent wanted to add some remarks.
I did, because this does seem overwhelming, and I'm well-aware of that. But I think the secret is that a lot of these things we're talking about are interwoven. So, a lot of them fit in together. So, it's not as overwhelming as you think, and. So it's not as overwhelming as you think and we do it in small chunks. For instance, Nancy yesterday worked with just grade one teachers across the district. That's the other thing we're looking to do is to have some equity and some work that's consistent regardless of which elementary school you're in. I think that's very important because we all feed into JFK and then the high schools. So we're looking to try to do that, both in terms of training and in terms of resources. I also want to speak to the fact that when I arrived here, we had no one in central office in this position. And frankly, we hadn't had one for a while, at least back into last spring. And the job had been advertised, it was a part-time position, and most of the people who applied didn't want part-time, so that eliminated several people. I found out that Nancy was interested and we talked about it and Nancy was hired, she's been in the district for several years now. And I, I am absolutely amazed, first of all, we made the position full-time about October, I think. But I'm amazed at the work that she's been able to do, the coordination, the organization, the fact that we have a plan, the fact that she works well with the administrative team, the fact that she's been able to do the networking with other school districts, which I think is extremely important, the fact that she's took all these grants and either rewrote them, wrote them for the first time, finished out the ones we had last year, which is a mammoth job. I just couldn't be more pleased with the fact that, that we have a homegrown person who's been able to step into this role and just do a great job. So she's a keeper and I think that you're on the right road in terms of looking at where it really matters, and that's in the classroom, what's happening in the classroom. And we need to provide that sort of professional development. While I'm on it, we talked about ESPs, we talked about teachers, we talked about administrators. I want to talk about school committee members. You too need to continue professional development. We've done a couple of things this year. I'm meeting tomorrow morning with some people, we're, we're talking about what you're going to be doing next with the administrative retreat. I'm in contact with John, so we're working this together. But it's important that also we have these sorts of educational discussions at the school committee level because we need your support to continue this sort of education for our kids. I also want to say that I'm very pleased, we did start apparently a couple of years ago or maybe longer, some staff development and then it sort of stopped mainly because of lack of resources. With Nancy's help, with the help of other administrators and with the help of other school districts and the collaborative, we've been able to restart that and I'm extremely pleased we have Jenny Bender as part of that training and I expect that to continue, not just next year, but in the year's future. She's been a tremendous resource. It's nice that she lives here in your community. And I think that we need to do more work in readers and writers workshop. We have the math component going. And there are a lot of initiatives, but they are coming together and I really see them moving forward. And I know that John Provost is very eager to get here and to continue working with the administrative team and Nancy to really implement the plan that we have. So thank you for listening, thanking Nancy for doing all this work. And amazing thing about Nancy, she thinks this is fun. I don't want to disillusion her. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jeters.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move, we're really switching topics and gears here. We now have a vote, requested vote of the school committee on a fingerprinting policy. And for that, I will turn to the superintendent.
Yes, I get to do the fun things. Massachusetts passed a law to be effective last July 1st with regard to fingerprinting rather than just Cory's for all employees and others associated with students in school in an unmonitored situation. So like so many other things that we do, they passed the law and then they decided maybe they should put something in place so we could actually do it. So we have not yet done any of the fingerprinting that we were supposed to have done starting last July 1st. So last week arrived a policy from the state with regard to fingerprinting, who's supposed to be fingerprinted, who has access to the information, where that information is stored, who gets retained, I mean, the retention of that information for how long, training and all of those good things. So this arrived last week along with the fact that until this is approved by local school committees throughout the Commonwealth, we cannot participate in getting the fingerprinting done. So it's sort of on a fast track. Normally these sorts of policies go through a policy committee. This is one that really we don't have discretion with, it is the law. And for our particular situation, the human resources department will be doing the fingerprinting, keeping the records and seeing that it gets done. Right now, there are only a couple of sites, I think there might be four sites in the state that are set up to do fingerprinting. The closest to us, I believe, is Pittsfield on one end and I think it's Springfield on the other end. And the responsibility is for people to get there, they can make appointments online, to get their fingerprinting done. Professional staff members, it's $50 and for non-certified people, it's $35. And the instructions are basically that we start with those teachers or those people who are employed new to our system this year, and then we're going to be working backwards and we have three years to get everyone done. So I've sent you out the policy in advance. If you have some questions, I'll try to answer them. And I would appreciate getting this on the books for this evening so we can get started on getting those people done that we should have had done last July.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
I had questions. I read the policy very quickly, so I'm sorry I did not study it. But, so my understanding is that this is essentially like sort of to beef up the Cory check process.
Yeah, this is across all states. Cory's are only good for Massachusetts and information coming out of Massachusetts. This covers the United States.
So, so the fingerprints that are collected will be kept at our personnel, human resources office?
Yes.
And those, those are then submitted to be checked against, I don't know, some national data bank of fingerprints?
They're not done here. You have to go to.
They'll be done, like I said, in Pittsfield.
Right. The information is kept in the human resources department.
Right, but like the pieces, the cards that have the fingerprints on them.
We don't keep those, no.
We don't?
I don't think so.
The human resources department doesn't keep it?
I think they keep the record of the report on those. I don't think they keep the actual prints.
Okay.
I could be wrong in that.
So that, so then, are these fingerprints then, so the fingerprints themselves are then now a part of a national database?
Yes.
So that, so an individual who has never, ever been fingerprinted before, in other words, has never been arrested, will now have their fingerprints in a national database?
You got it.
Which at some point, a fingerprint somewhere could get compared.
Uh huh, absolutely. That's the way it works.
And is the rationale for the policy that obviously trying to.
It's safety.
In schools and be able to do more comprehensive checks.
Well, that would work if the fingerprints were then compared to an existing database.
Yeah.
It's different when those fingerprints become the existing database to which.
Future.
Yeah, and you know, as, well, they say that no two fingerprints are the same. However, no two printings of your finger are exactly the same either. And so I'm really concerned that, you know, I don't, I understand we have to do this, I suppose, but I, I'm pretty concerned about just collecting this kind of information on, you know, people.
Well, I can't comment other than to say.
Non-suchets, you know.
Other than to say that most of the states, I believe 32 states have now gone to this process. And that's what the legislature approved from the state of Massachusetts. I think the concern is out of safety. I know the concern is out of safety for students.
Well, I understand that and that would be fine if it was comparing this fingerprint to an existing database. It's when this fingerprint becomes the database where that's not safety of our students, that's, you know, capturing this, you know, that's a future, you know, opportunity for some.
Well, if, if people have already been fingerprinted, then you are comparing it.
Exactly.
But not everyone has been fingerprinted before.
Just like running a Cory check where it's compared to an existing database of people who have been arrested.
This is becoming more inclusive because it obviously includes those people who've never been fingerprinted before.
Looks like they'll be running against an FBI database.
Right.
But they've never been fingerprinted before, so they won't show up there. But now their fingerprints are in there.
Uh huh.
And they will.
Any future crimes.
The future fingerprints will be compared to theirs.
Right.
Even though they have never been accused of anything.
I mean, there will be mistakes that will be made, just like there's a large percentage of mistakes that are made on Cory's all the time, you know, names and so a lot of times someone will come up with a positive, their name will show up in a Cory check, but it's actually, you know, not necessarily that person. So it will be that same amount of.
Except it's a little different because the thing you're being compared to, there's a reason why they're there. They're not just every American who ever had a job. They are every American who ever had a conviction.
Or who has a name similar to someone who may have had a conviction.
Well, there you go.
Or an arrest.
Right. Now all of a sudden, your fingerprints are going to be in there as, you know, it'll work in the reverse direction is all I'm saying.
It's the same, it's anyone who's been in the military or law enforcement.
It'll be tied to.
You take a job.
Because I have my fingerprints taken in Connecticut when.
If you take that job, then you get fingerprinted and now you become part of the database. And I understand what you're saying. If I decide to put my husband through the wood chipper and they get to print off the channel, they'll know that it's me if I got printed.
They won't be able to find your husband's fingerprints.
And they'll have this, hopefully have this taped, which will be really helpful to the investigation. They won't need your.
I use the mask first or I assume that he's going to.
Go here with this discussion.
Okay, Mr. Meyer.
I guess.
We don't even own a wood chipper.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, this is, this is not unusual for bar admission, I was fingerprinted and thought the same things as Mr. Moore, that I would, it's probably a bad idea for me to commit a felony from then on.
Unlike before.
Yes, unlike before. I guess I'm wondering, why is the mechanism been designed to create maximum inconvenience? You know.
I would like to know the same.
When I was, when I was fingerprinted, I went to the University of Chicago's Police Department, the police officers are pretty good at doing fingerprints in a way that can be sent off to the FBI's database. I'm just wondering, why would they do this? Why would they create maximal inconvenience for school districts? You know, it's not, I mean, the fee is one thing.
Yeah, it's charging the individual.
The fee is, the fee is one thing, which I cannot believe is not, you know, a revenue raiser for the state. But to force all of our personnel to track down Springfield when there is a police station with personnel who are qualified to do this is, is.
As I.
All our representatives.
As I understand it at this point, Downey, what they did is they, they resourced out to some company who's done it for other states, this process. So the process, this, this company has only set it up in four places. It's not in any of the local police stations at all. And I do know when I was fingerprinted in Virginia, I just went to the local police station and did it.
Your station, yeah.
And that was, what, 15 years ago? But it is a resourced out process and unfortunately, they don't have it up and running across the state, they only have certain sites. So it is, and it's also hard to get appointments because obviously teachers teach during the day. So that also is an issue. But this is.
This policy does say that it's, the individual has to pay the fee for doing it.
Yes, yes.
So now it's just another cost to be.
It's a cost to the individuals to be working within school systems. That's correct.
So are there any other questions or comments about the fingerprinting policy, spousal murder plans, anything else you want to talk about?
I was curious, what does, does the fingerprint requirement apply to all teachers at all schools in the Commonwealth or is it public schools or is it?
Certainly charter schools because they're public charter schools, so they're certainly included.
The article I'm reading says public and private school employees and childcare workers.
So every.
Yeah, anything that's state licensed, I think.
Licensed, yeah. Wow, and there's.
Fingerprinting is a new industry.
Collect this?
Yeah.
I've always been looking, in my work at a credit union, there are loan originators have to, if you're doing anything with mortgages or mortgage-related products, you have to be, you know, have to have these initials and you have to be fingerprinted for that. And that's not even, you're not, definitely not working with children unless they're, you know.
Procu.
Getting a mortgage. Extremely wealthy and they can buy a house. So it's a big industry.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to approve the policy as, as presented to us by the state?
Approval.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded. So any further discussion?
I think, Mr. Meyer said about, I think we should formally as a group address, you know, a note of concern to our local legislators.
Yeah.
This is, this does seem like, that at multiple levels, very, rather problematic. First of all, just the philosophical level, is this really the best way to keep our children safe? And second of all, if it is, are we doing it in a way that makes any sense in just the logistics of it? I don't know exactly what form that would take, but I think.
It could be a resolution made after we take this vote to instruct our parliament, I mean, our.
Parliament.
No, our legislative liaison, whoever that is. Is that you also?
Not at the moment.
Do we have a legislative liaison?
That or you could certainly dress.
Did you appoint one of those?
I believe I did and I, I'd have to look, I'd have to look at our records to know who that is.
I can tell you.
Ms. DeValle? Ms. DeValle is the legislative liaison. So that or you could draft a letter and propose that we approve it at the next meeting to be sent off to the governor of the state legislature. I think this was a law proposed by Governor Patrick through DC, so. So we could certainly do that. Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the motion carries. We now have another vote that has been requested by the city solicitor. And this is a vote concerning the Hemingway Scholarship Trust. And this is a trust from which scholarships are paid to students each year as part of graduation. And there was an administrative glitch with the renewal of the, of the, of the trust process. And so that lapsed. And so the city solicitor will actually need to go to probate court to get that renewed. And it requires a vote and he's given us the specific language, which is listed in F. So we need a motion of the school committee of, to consider the request of the city solicitor that the school committee assent to and waive further notice of the petition of the city of North Hampton to be appointed successor trustee of the Hemingway Scholarship Trust and to authorize the mayor in his capacity as chair of the school committee to execute the assent waiver of notice and waiver of sureties for filing with the Hampshire Probate and Family Court. That's the, that's the wording of the motion, if someone would make that.
I move that the school committee assent to and waive further notice and so forth and so on.
Okay, as written. Okay.
Second.
Second. So it's sort of a technical issue that occurred with this particular trust and, and in order to get us renewed to be, to be a trustee and to be able to continue awarding the scholarship in June, we need to have this done. So that's, that's why we need this vote. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You know what, I'm actually, just to be safe, I'm going to do a roll call vote just because we need to record this because it gets recorded with the probate documents. So let's just have a roll call vote so that we can know that a roll is taken.
Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Ian Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Karen Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Carrie Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Ed.
Yes.
And Ms. Ed.
Yes. Yes. Okay, great. So we'll be getting a copy of this vote and everything to go with this to be filed with the probate court. Okay, we'll now move on to the business manager's report and we will turn it over to Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick items tonight. One, you have a current financial position at your place in recent major categories. And as I said last month, we're in for a real casual close of the books this year without rating any revolving funds or anything to get through the year. It'll close on its own merit very easily this year. And the second thing is, we voted earlier a $420,000 contract for Van Poole for our sped transportation for the next three years, for 420 a year for the next three years. And I just want to let you know that that is current pricing. They didn't go up. So, I mean, that was good news as we look forward to future budgets, especially next year, because it was still hanging out there. It was the one big item that was still undecided, so.
Excellent, good check. Okay. I have a question about the Van Poole. Is that, that's a flat fee or how does that, because our use of it fluctuates, correct?
It does. I mean, that's special education is when kids come and kids go. And it's really kind of a big nut that can hurt you going either way. It can save you a lot of money if things work to your advantage or it could go the other way if a lot of, you get a lot of use. But this is per day, per bus, is the way it's built with the current routes. And again, it's about $420,000 currently.
Okay, so the rate is the same, but it could be a larger amount or a smaller?
Exactly. You know, it's hard to project what might happen with that population. And the other thing is that the only possible increase to it would be, there is a fuel escalation and obviously, if the price of gas goes up a couple bucks a gallon, he would want more money. And if it goes down, we save money. So that's another one of those things. After a dime change, then we start calculating who's getting a little bit more money.
Okay. Are there other questions for Mr. Scott on this particular report? Okay, excellent. We have the personnel report listed. Are there any personnel changes or to report?
Very few this month. You see it, there were six new hires in terms of substitutes, there were three people who left, there were no retirements, promotions or transfers.
Okay, excellent. So now I'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Right. We do have good news, and that is, I did receive a reply from the Commissioner of Education regarding the possible makeup day for leads. Remember, that was December 15th when we sent students home because of lack of heat. That day will not need to be made up and therefore, all of our schools, the last day will be Wednesday, June 25th. So that saved us a lot of issues. So that worked out very nicely. Earlier this week, many of us attended the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards Dinner. It was at the Log Cabin. And North Hampton was, had four people being honored this year. And we were well represented because we had 50 different people from our district attend that banquet. Again, I want to mention the teachers being honored. There Daniel Haraziz, who's the new social studies teacher at JFK, this is his first year. Melissa Power Green, who's a special education teacher at the high school. Tim Levy, who's the math teacher at JFK. And Paula Welchman, who's our Jackson Street fifth grade teacher. So it was a wonderful evening and it was great to see these people representing all of our good people here, being honored. There were 500 people total in the banquet room. This was started by Harold Grinspoon about 11 years ago. This was one of three nights. So in all, the honor goes to several teachers within Hampshire, Hampton and Franklin Counties. And he picks up the tab for all of it. So it's wonderful to see. During vacation week, we had representatives from the MSBA, they visited our district to do onsite assessments of the leads in the Ryan Road roof projects. And the good news is, we made it to the second round because they only chose 60 out of over 100 applications to actually do site visits. And we're supposed to hear in late May as to whether we will receive funding for one or both of those projects. And then the school choice lottery was held on Monday and letters are in the process of being mailed to parents. So that's been done as well. What I also want to speak to is the parents' concerns expressed this evening with regard to food service. I've made a note of their concerns and I need time to look into those matters and I'll report back to the board at your next meeting.
Okay, so that concludes the superintendent's report. I don't believe we have any new business. In terms of future business and meeting dates, our next school committee meeting is scheduled for June 12th, 2014, here in the JFK Community Room, 7:15 PM. Okay, so the final item on the agenda is, we have an executive session in the JFK Principals' Conference Room. And I would ask for a school committee member to make a motion and have that motion essentially reflect what's written as, on the agenda, so that we could take a vote and move into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. JFK Principals Conference Room under Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law for the approval of executive session minutes, March 10th, 2014, March 11th, 2014, March 12th, 2014, two from March 13th, 2014, April 10th, 2014, and April 16th, 2014. In Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation, whereas an open session would have a detrimental effect and further details would compromise the reason for going into executive session.
So there's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Ann Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Karen Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Carrie Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Ed Hugley?
Yes.
Ms. Knappton?
Yes.
Yes. And I must inform the public, announce to the public that we are in fact going into executive session because to discuss these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on our reasons for going into executive session in this case, discussing strategy with respect to litigation. I also need to announce that the school committee will adjourn from within executive session, so we will not return to open session. So with that, I will also invite our legal counsel, Alice Peasy, to join us in that executive session. With that, we will now move into executive session.